Board members and trustees could take their seat. Okay. So we will now call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll take roll call, and student trustee Igubechi is not here today's class? Yeah. Okay, so we have all trustees present except for trustee Bloom who is out of town. Welcome, everyone. This one you just handed to me right now?
Yes.
Okay, so now that brings us to item 3.1, which is public comment guidelines. And the Board of Trustees does have a board policy on speakers, and so we welcome public comment. Typically, there is a five-minute period for all members of the public that wish to address the board. We do have a maximum time limit of 20 minutes per topic. However, at the discretion of the President of the Board, these time limits may be extended. So for today's meeting, I would like to let the Board know that we will take all of your comments for today. So that brings us to Ms. Ruth Morales, who would like to address the Board on equity and board response. Before we start, I would like to let members of the public and remind the Board that we typically don't take any, we don't take any action, nor will we have any discussion or comments during public comment. And so you will have five minutes. At two minutes, I'll give you a two-minute warning, and then I'll give you a 30-second warning, just so that you know.
All right.
And so we can tell you that you can start.
So I'm Ruth Morales. I'm a professor here at SBCC, and I am entirely outside of my comfort zone. Usually, I like to be sitting at the table as well. That's how I approach things, but this needs me to come out from that table and pick up this microphone. I like to start off by saying, quoting Dr. King, where he said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." So this relates to what happened last week and to what's just prevailing here, what's happening at this institution. We all know what happened with an administrator and her use of the N-word at an equity meeting, and how that is ultimately handled. That matters to the people in this room and to a greater part of this community. I wasn't there, but I do not need to be there to say that her use of the word was unacceptable. She should have known better. She is in a position of privilege and power. No one should be using that word. And while I understand that she has apologized, it's going to take a lot more than an apology. An apology is simply not enough. I am asking for a public response, and a response that involves action, not a simply, not a simple "I'm sorry, I'm sorry" is not enough. We need an apology, and I'm speaking to the Board here, and you are the bosses of my boss, right? And this is why I'm saying I'm outside of my comfort zone, and I am not a tenured professor. But I am here speaking up because these things need to be said. A public apology, we need more than a public apology. We haven't even gotten a public apology, Dr. Beebe. We haven't gotten a public apology, and we know that that needs to be said. What else do I want to say? The Black Student Union, the Black students, Black faculty, Black staff, and the marginalized population as a whole needs an apology, at minimum. We all know that morale at this institution is in the dumps. Fighting institutionalized racism in the academy is a beast of a battle. But this one right here is what we call in my field a point source. We can point to it, and if we can point to it, then why aren't we addressing it? It is right in front of us. We need to take it head-on. I want you to consider this as an opportunity, an opportunity to learn, to grow, and the first thing you need to do is humble yourselves. Humble yourselves and listen to these people here when they pick up this mic. Do not invoke the power of the gavel, and I appreciate that you said that you're going to take every comment, but do not invoke the power of the gavel. We need to be heard. That is all I have to say.
Thank you. Akil Hill? I saw Akil. There he is.
Just want to greet the Board, say hello. Thank you for moving the meeting. I know this is a special meeting, and I know you guys decided to move it here, so I want to thank you guys for doing that. Dear President Beebe and Board of Trustees, We recently became aware of Lindsay Moss's use of the N-word at the gender equity meeting this past Wednesday. While she has formally apologized to those present in the room and has agreed to enter diversity training, she has not formally apologized to the greater Black community of faculty and staff on campus. We see the use of her, the N-word. We see the use of the N-word subsequently actions as a senior administrator as a direct violation of the college mission and vision statements. Her subsequently actions as a senior administrator and as a direct violation of the college mission statement and visionary statements. Her actions promote the culture of discriminatory practices. On behalf of the Santa Barbara City College Black Faculty and Staff Association, we demand Lindsay M. Moss, Vice President of Business Services, to submit her letter of recommendation... We... We demand that Lindsay M. Moss, Vice President of Business Services, submit her resignation immediately. We feel the, we feel the action would fully acknowledge her culpability in which she has done and partially atone for the hurt she has caused to the people at the meeting and to the Black members of the Santa Barbara City College community.
Hello, my name is Brittany, and I'll be reading the second part of this letter. Many of our Black students have been publicly harassed using the N-word entering and exiting the campus. The most recent account of the use of the N-word spewed publicly in the library. In addition, a student also formally filed a complaint about an adjunct faculty member using the N-word in the classroom. While these, while these incidences have been reported to officials or senior administration on campus, no actions have been taken thus far. Each of these incidences make a visible lack and respect and, of lack of respect and protection of our Black students.
Okay, stop two minutes.
Many of our Black students feel unsafe on campus, thus impacting their ability to focus and to learn in a safe place without fear of being attacked. It is hard for us, as a community and institution, to not only retain, but also help Black students persist.
My name is Dean Evans. I'll be reading the last part of the letter. We acknowledge that SBCC has made efforts to create physical spaces so that programs such as Amodia could be adopted by our campus. However, we feel that there's been a lack of transparency and follow-through investigating harassment claims. We request that there be an independent council or entity established, possibly modeled after UC's Judicial Affairs Unit, which will have the responsibility of reviewing these claims and establishing how to move forward without the guise of senior administration. Additionally, we also request that all administrators, faculty, and staff obtain anti-racism training in person. In closing, we would like to reiterate our demand that Lindsay M. Moss, Vice President of Business Services, submit her resignation immediately. The purpose of education is to not only make future professionals and leaders in their intended fields of study, but also to make them well-rounded individuals. It is our responsibility as educators to make sure that our students are exposed to and embrace individuals from diverse backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives. We look forward to engaging in a more formal discussion on policies and procedures to provide a more inclusive campus. In solidarity, the Santa Barbara City College Black Faculty and Staff Association.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brittany Harden. Is Brittany here? Oh, you just come in.
I was just for, with this, so all of us could go together at the same time.
Okay. Thank you, Brittany. Melissa Menendez? The cursive is not legible. Is Melissa Menendez? Yes.
Hi, my name is Melissa Menendez. I'm an English faculty here, and I just wanted to say that... It's very difficult to be a faculty member here when those in power in this institution do not support all the students who go through this place. I do what I do because I love what I do, and it makes it very difficult to do it in a place where there is no support to fight the good fight. I thought I wasn't going to cry. So I think, I hope that you're really listening, truly listening. Things need to change. This is not the first incident, nor is it going to be the last. You know, I have a doctorate in English despite a system that really tried to keep me out. And that's why I work here, because I want to be a role model for students so that they too can feel that they have that ability to do that, to accomplish that. So I really hope you're listening, and you take these comments in, not just mine, but everybody who has something to say, and do what is ethically and moral and just.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Simone, and the last name, it's not very legible. Let me ask Dr. Beebe. If Simone is here... Oh, Simone. I'm sorry, Simone? You can yield your time. Do you have a speaker? You guys want to come together? Simone, tell me your last name, honey. What is it? I didn't hear you, Simone. Rest camp, thank you. And so you're going to yield your time to...
Denise Baches.
Denise Baches, okay.
I actually thought that I would sit out because I was so upset and so angry. I started this college 16 years ago with an ugly racist incident that was not taken care of in the way that I thought it should be. I have dealt with more than one racist incident on the campus, and I'm retiring in two weeks, and here I am, again, having to deal with something that made me sick. And here I am, again, on this campus, having to be up here facing people that I don't want to ever see when it has to do with racism. I'm only up here because I feel that I have to say something.
Thank you.
So I wasn't planning to speak. I just wanted to yield my time to the previous speakers, but I just want to add on to what Denise said. My position here has just been two months. It's also not secure, but I feel like it's worth the risk to say something on behalf of our students, also the Black faculty and staff who have been here for a significant amount of time. I just want to add that this incident that happened wasn't a one-time thing, but it really, really shares with us the culture on this campus. Because this conversation came up because students on our campus were brave enough again and again to say that they were being harassed in the library, and nothing was happening. So as we talk about this person and this language that we need to make sure that there's equity on campus, I hope we're not just focused on that one person and not thinking of how we can change the campus climate. Because what I don't want to happen is for all of us to trust you with our stories and trust you with what's been happening and for nothing to come of it. So I would ask you, as you're here, to truly bear witness to what we're saying, and also to let you know that we'll be watching you. We want to see the actions that come out of this. This shouldn't just be a one-time meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Evans, you were just here. Did you have another one?
No, that was it.
Okay. Chelsea Lancaster?
I sat at our last staff and faculty in-service and watched a Black man give us a presentation about call-in culture, and I'm here to talk about how the Black Lives Matter movement would not exist without call-out culture. The Me Too movement would not exist without call-out culture because you're not listening. The white moderate and people who are more interested in civility than courage are not listening, and our kids are dying. This place is a matter of life and death for our students. I want to talk about the fact that had this person made an anti-Semitic comment, they would have been gone. When are Black folks going to be enough for us to take action? I want to talk about how those on the receiving end of this harm are constantly vilified, othered on this campus, and the people who are causing the harm, the person who said that word in that room, we've been asked to receive her with grace. And I want to really frame that as something that's the most problematic here. I also want to talk about Crystal Farmer, who just showed up, who was sitting in that young man's seat, and who received an unending amount of racial microaggression sitting in that seat as a leader on this campus because we told her that if you're at the table, you won't be on the table, and we know that all of our students are still on the table. And we know it because I would never say that word under any circumstance. I want to know why that person is now committing to anti-racist training when the third in-charges at this institution should have already done a lot of anti-racism training. That needs to be a value that we hold dear on this campus. Why are people running this institution when they don't have any cultural competency? And that's it. I just want you to really listen to the students in this room. Again, people love to talk about Dr. King. Dr. King talked about the white moderate and how we prefer a negative peace that is absence of justice than a positive peace that is present of justice. And I'm asking you for a positive peace on this campus because we are tired of the negative peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Our next speaker is Isabel Carrillo. Is Isabel here?
President Beebe and the Board of Trustees, in regards to the letter that was sent out by faculty and staff, we would like to acknowledge that there were students present in this meeting as well, who are also deeply affected alongside staff, faculty, and other administrators. The use of this racial slur by a white administrator clearly demonstrates the institutional racism that has been embedded in our campus environment and educational system, and we demand that Dr. Beebe and the Board of Trustees take action and responsibility. This is an example of what should not occur on our campus and is the kind of issue that is repeatedly swept under the rug and minimized to be treated like any other social situation that our students of color experience on a daily basis. We should not be protecting the people that cause this harm and instead hold them accountable for their actions. Regardless of Ms. Moss's intent, her word had a powerful impact on the people present in the room. Whether or not Ms. Moss herself is a racist, the N-word is rooted in a horrific and gruesome history of systematic racism and the dehumanization of Black people in the United States and across the world. As students in a room full of administrators, faculty, and staff, we felt incredibly helpless when this word was used by a person in power. The power dynamics in the room were very blatantly obvious. Furthermore, Ms. Moss's ignorance towards the need of demographic questions in our campus safety survey was very concerning, and itself led to her insensitive comment. Her unawareness of issues related to students of color is concerning, to say the least. We stand in solidarity with the SBCC Black Faculty and Staff Association and demand the following responses. Number one, immediate resignation of Vice President Lindsay Moss for her use of the racial slur that goes against the mission and vision of SBCC. Number two, meaningful, ongoing, and in-person anti-racist training determined by the Equity Committee and the Black Faculty and Staff Association for all members of the SBCC Board of Trustees, Presidents' Cabinet, Deans, Managers, Committee Leaders, Work Group Leaders, and all of the other full and part-time members of the SBCC faculty and staff. Number three, the establishment of any independent council or entity which will have the responsibility of reviewing harassment claims and determining the appropriate responses. In solidarity, the SBCC Student Coalition for Justice.
Thank you, Isabel. Our next speaker is Alejandra Melgosa.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say I support the Black students, faculty, and staff on this campus. I just, I cannot believe that you are allowing this to happen on this campus when you claim it's one of the most, it's the number-one community college in the nation. I don't think so when these things are happening. This is a disgrace. This is embarrassing, and this is shameful. This is something that we should all be ashamed of. I support the Black students here on this campus, and I think you should fulfill all their demands as soon as possible. Involve them, listen to them, and most importantly, institutionalize these demands, and don't wait for them to graduate, to transfer, and for you to forget about them, because that's the best thing that Boards do. You make sure that these demands are erased, that they're finished, that no one remembers them, but that's not going to be the case here. The Santa Barbara community is watching, and we are going to hold you accountable to that. So thank you. Thank you to the Black students and to the faculty and staff that have paved opportunities for all of us, because I would not be able to receive an education without the sacrifices of Black students that paved the way for people of color like me to receive an education. So thank you.
Thank you, Alejandra. Our next speaker is Ibsahim. If I'm not pronouncing it correctly, so it's spelled A-I-B-S-A-H-I-M? Does it not legible? Tell me your first name. Ibrahim. Ibrahim, please come up, Ibrahim.
Okay, like, I'm new to this campus, and within my first week here, I had, I was doing my new student orientation, and the people at the, the, what's that center? Yeah, like, they told me I could go to the LRC and start doing my, my new student orientation, and when I got there, this one white lady with blonde hair just came up, and she was like, "Oh, I'm not supposed to be there." And I was like, they told me I could, I could be here, and she kept on coming back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And then just out the blue, two cops came in, and then they just started staring at me, and she came in talking about I only had 15 minutes. And it kind of made me feel, because I've had like a troubled past, and I'm now like trying to start everything over, focus on school, and the fact that my first, within my first week in, on this campus, like, that's what I experienced, it kind of made me be like, yo, like, is it really worth it? And it kind of made me mad, but it's like, it's not good, but you get so used to it that you kind of be like, oh, it's just normal activities, and in reality, you're not even supposed to do that, so y'all got to change up if this is happening within the first week of me being here.
Thank you, Ibrahim. Our next speaker is Jason Harris.
Hi. So before this board meeting started, I've heard a few students talking about discussing the way this word was used in this recent incident, and I heard them talking about what version of the word they said it and what context they used it in and everything else in between. And I just want to say for myself, like, that it doesn't matter what way or what context the word was used. I mean, this is a word, this is a word that has been used for, forever, to demean, degrade, dehumanize, and oppress Black people, and the fact that it's being used on campus so frequently, and nobody's doing anything about it, nobody's holding anybody accountable, is just extremely disrespectful and just... Thanks, y'all. It's just extremely disrespectful and extremely uncomfortable for us Black students, and yeah, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Our next speaker is Naya Dozier-L.
Hi, I'm Naya Dozier-L. I am the president this year for the Black Student Union, and... And it was really important that I came up here to speak to you guys today because when I first came to this campus, the first thing that I did was find the Black Student Union, because I knew that just, I needed some support here, and I already could see that the staff and that interactive, it wasn't going to be that. I needed people who were going to look like me to support me, and that shouldn't be necessary. That shouldn't be necessary on a community college. That shouldn't be necessary, period. And when things like this happen, and students are so brave, and they bring it up to you, and they bring it up to faculty and administration, looking to the people who are supposed to put the change, and then there was nothing. And that's why I also want to thank the Black faculty on this campus so much. I appreciate you guys so much. You know, you shouldn't have to look to people to be the change that you seek, but I am so grateful to have you guys here to do that, all of you. And I really do hope that they gave you exactly what needs to be done, like, verbatim, just what needs to be done, and I truly hope that you see that as a blessing to take in effect, that someone had to give you what needs to be done when it clearly should already be known, it should be stated. It's a clear path of what's going to make this right, and I just really hope, on behalf of the students, on half-Black students who just feel so uncomfortable, so isolated on this campus, that you really kind of take this in and take it seriously and believe us. Because I don't know if that's what it is, just believe us from our experiences. That's it.
Thank you, Naya. Our next speaker is Shelby Arthur. So usually, at the time of every regularly scheduled board meeting, we will take public comment prior to the call of start of the meeting. However, you may put in a slip. I see that there are no more slips, so you can just tell us your name, and then we will take it. Same thing with Nia Reviz and Crystal Farmer and Ray Napoleon. So public comment usually is submitted prior to the call of the meeting. If you just want to give us your name on the back of one of these? Angie, do you want this one? Yeah. No problem.
I'm just deferring my time anyway, so I hate to make all that for that, but yeah, I'll be deferring my time to Akil.
No, what I just said, the... No, when I just said, those slips that I have right now, typically, we wouldn't, but yes, you will be able to. So, I have Nia, I have Crystal, and then I have Ray.
Are there any others?
So, the question was if the gentleman can submit a speaker, yeah, and so, we have some that were submitted prior to the start of the meeting, and we have some additional. And typically, we don't, so whenever we take public comment, we do that prior to the start of the meeting, but we will take them. So, we have still a few in hand, plus the ones that are here. So, Shelby, now it's your turn. Are you ready?
Thank you. I, like Dr. Morales, am very uncomfortable in speaking to you, but I'm going to give it a shot. I'm here as a classified staff member to support the Black students and staff and faculty on our campuses. I was not in the meeting when this egregious and hideous offense occurred, but like many incidents on this campus, I heard about it by word of mouth from other people. I'm obviously also angry, and hurt, and troubled by this, but what I can't comprehend is how a person in a position of power at an institution of higher education would not know how painful this would be to our students and staff and faculty. I cannot understand how our campus leadership responded to this situation selectively, lacking in transparency, without bringing people in to understand an appropriate course of action that should be taken. I believe that this is indicative of a crisis in leadership that enables people to move into positions of power and to move up the ranks based on qualifications that do not include basic cultural competency, and a basic understanding of the experiences of people who are impacted by institutionalized racism, whose stories have been oppressed by this type of secrecy and this type of cover-up. I have only worked at Santa Barbara City College for 12 years, but in 12 years, I have built a network of colleagues whom I am honored to say trust me enough to share some of their experiences on this campus. I am here to tell you that I bear witness to comments and actions that have been shared with me by students, staff, and faculty on this campus, that management and administration have belittled and disrespected them by using language like this as individuals and based on their group membership. I believe that the leadership on this campus, and frankly, across institutions of higher education, have developed strategies to closet these experiences into secrecy, and to protect the institution above the needs of the individuals who make this institution run. That means our students, that means our staff, and that means our faculty members. I'm asking you to take a really, really deep look at our institution's demands of our leaders, and then I want you to look at your own qualifications for leadership on this campus. And when we are hiring and promoting leaders, and managers, and administrators on this campus, I hope you will start to require applicants to meet the standards of leadership that reflect our campus and our community's needs beyond the basic functions of a job description, meaning that when you are given a position of power, you should already be oriented to lessons that make you an inclusive, equity-centered leader, so that your learning and growth leads the campus conversation, and does not have to waste time by catching up to the rest of the people in this room.
You have two minutes.
People are watching our campus, and I'm asking you to take this as an opportunity to really clearly define the types of leadership that Santa Barbara City College wants to represent to our community. And I want to give the rest of my time to Roxanne.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Pate, and I'm also a classified staff member here in support of our Black faculty, staff, and students. While incidents of racism and sexual assault and harassment are deeply traumatic for individuals and communities who they're perpetuated against, oftentimes, the negligent, and careless, and unjust responses to those incidents create a deeper and more lasting harm. This incident of racism took place in a meeting in which I was a part of. It was a work group that was born as a result of one of this campus's unjust and inept responses to gender-based harassment. Time's up. We're angry, we're organized, we're in solidarity, we're here, and we are not going to stop until you all listen and take some action. Thank you.
Shelby, and, and thank you, Roxanne. Roxanne, you also have a slip. Did you want to? Okay, so Roxanne and Ellen Carey. So Roxanne, and further, so we've been allowing speakers to come up multiple times, but typically, each speaker coming for the board is limited to one time, so, but we've been having you guys come up. So, I'll, so now, up next is Roxanne Pate and Ellen Carey, together, right?
Yeah, I'm Ellen Carey, I'm a librarian, and I was, thank you. And I was at the Gender Equity Meeting, and I just wanted to mention.
Okay, so this is a letter that we have drafted. President Bibi and Board of Trustees, on Wednesday, November 14th, at the SBCC Gender Equity Work Group Meeting, Vice President of Business Services Lindsay Moss, a white woman, said the N-word, a racial slur that serves to dehumanize and oppress Black people and communities. Rather than stopping to acknowledge the egregious use of such a harmful word, Ms. Moss chose to continue speaking. Additionally, when a faculty member of color stopped to address the harm caused by the use of this racial slur, Ms. Moss expressed her embarrassment, then proceeded to leave the room. Members of the work group asked her to stay so that we could have the opportunity to discuss the use of her racial slur and the harm that it caused, and continues to cause in our broader campus community, but she chose to leave.
Several members of the work group, which included students, staff, faculty, and administrators, were deeply impacted by this experience, and continued to discuss the harm caused for nearly 40 minutes. Within the last five minutes of the meeting, Ms. Moss returned with interim Executive Vice President Pamela Ralston, and proceeded to again state that she was embarrassed. Ms. Moss tried to explain herself, but she did not take the opportunity to listen to the experience of others.
The impact of a white vice president's use of a racial slur, and her failure to hear the concerns expressed in the meeting by those who heard it, continues to have repercussions across campus. This incident is not an isolated event. It occurred within a campus culture that regularly marginalizes the voices and concerns of Black students, staff, and faculty, and fails to address institutionalized racism and white supremacy. It is emblematic of a campus environment in which we have consistently heard from Black students and colleagues that they do not feel safe, welcome, or supported on this campus. Moreover, the Board of Trustees was just presented a report that showed the abysmal lack of representation we have on this campus of Black faculty, managers, and staff.
We stand in solidarity with the SBCC Black Faculty and Staff Association and demand the following responses. Immediate resignation of Vice President Lindsay Moss for her use of a racial slur that goes against the mission and vision of SBCC. Meaningful, ongoing, and in-person anti-racism training determined by the Equity Committee, the Black Faculty and Staff Association, and the SBCC Coalition for Justice. For all members of the SBCC Board of Trustees, Presidents' Cabinet, Deans, Managers, Committee Leaders, Work Group Leaders, and all other full and part-time members of the Faculty and Staff. The establishment of an independent council or entity which will have the responsibility of reviewing harassment claims and determining the appropriate responses.
Individuals make up an institution, and its leaders are representative of that institution. We are deeply disheartened by the response of the administration thus far, and we demand that this incident is acknowledged and our collective voices are heard. Our college mission is one of equity and social justice, but it is at moments such as this which fundamentally challenge those goals. The perpetuation of institutional racism that creates barriers to our students' success is unethical, and to rise up from this incident requires deliberate and intentional action to break the cycle. We expect a timely response to these demands, and we look forward to continued dialogue and action to provide a more inclusive campus through institutional policy and procedure. In solidarity, the SBCC Coalition for Justice.
Thank you, Roxanne and Ellen. Our next speaker is Roxanna Corona.
I am sick and tired of hearing of all these things going on, and you guys doing nothing about it. You guys haven't been listening or understanding to the students that have come forward, them being so brave to trust you guys and tell you all these things that make them feel diminished, and you still haven't listened. And I say this from personal experience. I came forward to the Board of Trustees and told them about my experience on this campus of misogyny and sexual harassment. When will it be enough for you guys to listen? It made me feel like I shouldn't even be coming forward about this. I was brave enough to come forward and tell, trust you guys with my incident, hoping that something would come out of it, but nothing. Still, you guys have not been listening or understanding to us. We want to be heard, and we want justice. I want to be a part of this campus that makes me feel safe. That's all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sage Gaspar.
My name is Sage Gaspar, and I am an Ethnic Studies major here at SBCC, and I am here today as an ally to the Black community on campus, speaking out against discrimination and racism here. This is an institution that prides, that prides itself on being the best in the nation, yet incident after incident, this place continues to fail to keep our students, specifically students of color, safe. It was in the 60s that Mexicans fought alongside Black students, fighting for equity, sorry, to make, to segregate schools, to desegregate schools and receive better conditions. And over 60 years later, we are still being treated as second-class citizens on our campus, and it is not fair, and we are here to say that enough is enough. We fought again, we fought back then, and we're, we're willing to fight again. What is the school faculty's main purpose, if not to support their students and meet their needs first and foremost? And I urge, and I am here today to say that it is the board's responsibility to take action against this incident and meet all the demands brought forth today. In solidarity, Sage Gaspar.
Thank you, Sage. Our next speaker is Nia Reviz.
First things first, my name is Nia Reviz. Hello. I would like to say I'm disgusted. I'm transferring. I'm suggesting the rest of my people of color transfer, preferably to an HBCU. My ex-boyfriend's been spit on. Your security did nothing. You're going to have a student of color come to you and tell you they've been spit on, report it to your security, and have nothing happen? A football player, by the way, who promotes money coming to your school, by the way. And I'm going to suggest that all the Black football players as well, transfer, because they're not getting the education they need here. It's disgusting that we have to continue to come back in here and speak about this with y'all, like, for real? And if she continues to work here and not resign, that's just showing us exactly what this school's about, regardless if you're the best or not. I hope you guys really take into consideration how your students of color feel before you have no more students of color. Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Crystal Farmer.
First of all, I just, I just would like to say, it is so beautiful to see y'all in here today. I am so proud of you guys. I am so proud of you all. So, I was trying to stay far away from this place as much as possible, because I hate this place so much. I have withdrawn from all my classes because of all my experiences here on this campus as a Black woman. You know, they tell you, go through the proper channels, they tell you, join ASG, they tell you, sit on committees. Well, guess what? I did all that. I did it the right way, and I fought hard. I was still harassed, I was discriminated against, I was pushed out of places, I was left jobless, I'm a single mother of two, and now, I can barely get out of bed every day. You know, you know what this, the worst thing about this place is? You guys took my passion. You took away my passion. You took away everything I loved, everything I had value in, and now I'm having to rebuild my life and start fresh. You know what? The only thing I learned leaving this place is, I was, it was a constant reminder is, you are a Black woman, and no matter where you go, you're going to have to fight, because nobody cares about you. For a community college, that's number one in the nation. You guys lead all these campus kickoffs, and you spread this equity and this inclusivity word around, but nobody's doing the work. I sat right there in the same seat that that Black man is sitting to. I'm the reason why he's on ASG. I'm the reason why a lot of these students feel like they have a safe home. I did that work. A single mother of two, a Black woman, low-income, marginalized, I did that. I helped build a mojo. I did that. And you want to know the worst part about it all? I was going to stay far away from this place, I was just going to duck my head down, apply to another school. By the way, I already got into three universities, I didn't need to. And then, I had to get a forward email, I had to hear that a VP of this school said the N-word, and then get a forward email from Dr. Bibi that he sent out and said, "Can we show her grace, because she is human?" Where was my grace? Who was going to humanize me? Because I was dehumanized. Where was the grace for the women that came forward with their Title IX appeals, and had to watch a white man be let go with a large settlement case, and his HR record wiped clean? Where was our grace, huh? So, we can show somebody grace that uses the N-word? Where, where is the grace? Where is the justice on this campus to the people? And I brought my daughter here today, because she's had to see her mom beat the press for months now, and I wanted to show her that, no matter what, y'all not going to get me. Y'all not going to get me. White supremacy will not, will not control my life. It's a wake-up call. I sat right there begging you guys to listen to me and pay attention to me. I individually met with a lot of you, and I tried to be your friend, and I tried to work with you guys, and nobody fought for me, and nobody stuck up for me. So, sit with that. So, they're coming here today, asking you guys to pay attention. I'm coming here today to ask them bye to all of y'all. Y'all need to go. The administration, because y'all ain't doing nothing, because I sat right there, and I went through the chains of command, and I tried to work with you guys, and you did nothing. Actually, you know what? Pause. Jonathan Abud, you a real one. I'm going to say that.
Thank you, Crystal. Our next speaker is Ray Napoleon.
So, I think it's pretty obvious that all of this could have been avoided. That woman right there, the one who just spoke, was one of the first people to come forward to you all in April, and questioned Dr. Bibi's problematic email to response to the gender equity code, uh, issues that arose- the gender equity issues that arose on this campus after Michael Shermer wasn't invited here and Mark McIntyre started his harassment of not only me, but any female faculty that spoke up for me. Dr. Bibi's response to that, let's not get distracted. Don't worry, folks, they're not distracted. I wasn't at the meeting on Wednesday because I think a committee formation in response to everything that has happened to me and anything associated with me, including Crystal Farmer, for the last seven months, is bull crap. Bull crap. A committee? APs? Are you kidding me? I reported constant harassment. And we have a gender equity meeting that meets once a month, and Dr. Bibi, single-handedly, said, Lindsay Moss, you run it. Well, she showed herself, didn't she? Was she the person to lead equity work on this campus? I wanted nothing to do with that space. I'm having a hard time coming on this campus. And a question that Crystal posed to you in April was the following: if a white woman with a PhD can't get y'all to listen, how are you going to hear her? And you didn't. I came up here. The last time I was up here, y'all cut my damn mic off, and I kept talking. The time before that, I asked what code of ethics Crystal violated. Still have the answer for that. The time before that, I came to you talking about the harassment that me and the people associated with me underwent in addition to a professor watching porn in his office. And nothing has happened. None of this surprises me. I saw a lot of folks on campus since last Wednesday, and they're all so surprised. I'm not. Racism is here. Misogyny is here. And if you're surprised, you haven't been paying attention. And Dr. Bibi, I do believe you said this is all so surprising when 34 Science faculty members wrote you a letter with their own damn demands about what needed to happen two months ago and didn't, and in response to that, you said this is all so surprising. If this is all so surprising, wake up.
This next, MCHL?
Michael.
Michael, your last name, Michael?
Sykes.
Sykes. Michael Sykes.
Well, I surely hoped in my first semester, since joining the student body of Santa Barbara City College, since joining the ASG, since becoming the Regional Board System of Affairs Director for the entire region, that I wouldn't have to address this. Personally, I've spoken to many of you, President Bibi, smiled with you, had conversations, sipped coffee, been in committees, used my skills, my asset as a student, my experience as a student, to forward motion this entire school. I don't think there's forward motion. A lot of these comments have been very emotionally charged. That might not reach you all. It reached me, but I'm going to set that aside and use logic. Recently, I've been working on an event that would, is a celebration of the fall semester. It's recently been approved. Since it's been approved, it has been kind of attacked by President Bibi, by different boards. I've received word that now is not the time for a celebration, given that our community is suffering from fires, people are hurting, their hearts hurting, and I've taken that into account. So I've been able to adjust. I've since retracted my event, and will be formulating events, circulating what matters. I will be creating events for the fires and, you know, helping out those who have been affected by that. And now I will be creating events for the unrepresented, for the Black students, for the minority students on campus, majority students on, the majority, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Let me not get emotionally charged. So, sitting on the committee with you all, speaking with you all, I really hope that it has been genuine. It's been genuine for me. I hope that your smiles have not been fake. I hope that your conversation and your trust in me has not been un-genuine. So, we've spoken about bringing students to this campus, guided pathways. We've spoken about what steps we can take to ensure that the students here are having the easiest navigation here, but what about the students who are already currently here? What about the students? I wouldn't bring students here. I wouldn't. I was going, next semester, I plan to hit, not hit, but attend every, to reach out to every high school. Yes, to reach out to every high school with their graduating class and put on assemblies on behalf of Santa Barbara City College. This is in the works. This is what I've been working on. I don't think I would do that currently. You asked me to adjust my event, President Bibi, and I abided. We're asking you to adjust. I'm sorry, one last thing. I want to give a shout-out to Crystal Palmer. I wouldn't have joined ASG. I consider her my senior. I can say I wouldn't be here without her, so I have to say that and make mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our last speaker is Cyrus Castañeda.
I'm just deferring my time. Is that okay? Do I need to say that officially? Deferring my time? Thank you for this, John.
Is it Castañeda? It doesn't have the ñe.
It's Castañeda.
Okay. The nada.
So I just want to speak my truth about what has transpired and what I've been kind of dealing with since the last Wednesday. I caught wind of the situation, and yes, it was a horrific thing. But as being a Black man, I'm sure people know, were we shocked? I wasn't shocked. What triggered me, and listen, I'm not anti-institution. I believe in the institution. I've been here for 15 years. If I didn't believe in Santa Barbara City College, I wouldn't be here. I believe in it. So we have different lenses. People have different approaches, and that's great. But my approach, I don't believe the institution is, we got to burn it down. I don't believe in that. But I do believe that we have to get under the hood and do some work. So, what triggered me? You know, I work over in the Mission of Records, and I would be happy to just process athletic eligibility, deal with faculty, and do my job. That's what I would have been happy to do. But I was forced to be here. I was forced to be here. So what triggered me? Dr. Bibi, your email triggered me. It did. You didn't have the bandwidth, you didn't have the bandwidth to call her or to tell her she needs to be placed on administrative leave while we do an investigation. You decided to send an email to your managers, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, managers, supervisors, and tell everybody that they have to do racial training within six months. You also proceeded to say in that letter that she was a good person. She's a good person. This is not about if she's good or she's bad. This is about the vision of the college, my man. This is about what we hold ourselves accountable to. You proceeded to say in the email that your grandfather was Filipino, and he was dark-skinned, and... Listen, the last thing you want, I'm going to tell you something, and if you don't learn anything, you got to learn this. The last thing you can say to someone who's been offended by that word is that you can relate. Because you cannot relate. So instead of having the bandwidth, instead of having the bandwidth to put her on administrative leave and call your Black faculty and staff together and say, listen, something egregiously has happened. I want to hear from you guys. I want to hear from what you guys have to say, how we can move forward from this situation. But you didn't do that. You couldn't call any one of us? I mean, damn, there's only 30 of us on campus. I mean, what's going on? I mean, if you, listen, if you don't, when my boss comes to me and says, hey, how do you do this? If I don't know, guess what I'm doing? Guess what everyone in this room is doing? We ask him, who knows? This is, this is leadership 101, my man. And I do think that you're a great man, but what I grapple with is, we can't have these mistakes with people in power. And then you can't suppress it. Why people believe in institutionalized racism? You suppressed it, my man. You were trying to cover it up. Because you didn't reach out to someone. I asked everyone. I asked, when I met with the Black faculty and staff, I asked, hey, everyone, have you heard, have you heard from Dr. Bibi? I asked the Black administrator, Chris Johnson. He said, no, I haven't heard him. I asked anyone else, have you heard from Dr. Bibi? Everyone said, no. So you didn't ask anybody that works here, who were here before you and will probably be here after you. So suppression is real. I'm still telling people on this campus today when I was walking, they had never even heard about it. See, to get to the other side of the bridge, and it's quite ironic that we have a bridge on campus, we got to go through some ugly stuff. It can't be smooth sailing all the time. And so what also bothered me with your email is the fact that you were like, she's a good person. Listen, I'm not in the business of judging who's good and who's bad. I've made mistakes. Right? But what is right is what's right, and what is wrong is what's wrong. So hopefully we can move forward from this with some real solutions, and we all know what the best solution is. And I seriously, really hope that Santa Barbara City College can eventually, at some point, be the beacon of light. Because I believe in Santa Barbara City College. But I don't believe, I know you don't believe that's, you know, but I believe. I believe. So hopefully we can move forward and get some real solutions and understand that, like, this is a part of the process. Man, I ain't sitting on a board. I don't even want to stand up. You saw me earlier. I couldn't, I could barely read it, man. I was too emotional. But seriously, I wish everyone well, and hopefully you guys can really, really push her out. That's it.
Thank you, Cyrus, and thank you, Akil. Is there a motion to adjourn to close session?
I saw a move.
Really quick, thank you all for coming. I feel you, and Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Trustee Nielsen and seconded by Trustee Coninger to adjourn to close session. Thank you.